Good evening Wakefield. I call to order a town council meeting of November 10th at 7:02 PM. I ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three attendance, I am here with all my town councillors. We are all in studio today, item four.
Madam Chair, move to open executive session for a conference with council for the town of Wakefield in connection with Dingra v. Wakefield et al., MCAD number 24BEM01060, to discuss and possibly vote on proposed settlement with the expectation of returning to open session afterwards.
Second.
Second grade and to go into executive session have to take a roll call vote. Councillor Fox, Councillor Chrisley, Councillor Constance, Councillor Butler, Councillor Carney, Councillor Tyne and myself is yes. Thank you, we are going into executive session.
[Music]
Wakefield. 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 Wakefield.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Town Council to sign the settlement agreement that has been under discussion in executive session on behalf of the town, which settlement agreement was recommended by the town's insurance company and which settlement is being 100% funded by the insurance company of the town and under which the town makes no admission of wrongdoing whatsoever.
Seconded, great. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Six zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Counselor Chines, come on down.
It is 7:40, so should we open the public hearing?
Oh yes.
Yeah, okay. Item 6A. Verizon petition relocation of pole to accommodate road construction at 193-199 Nahand Street. I don't, I think, is Joe on the Zoom, Sheri?
Joe is on the Zoom. Let me bring him over.
Is it you, or is it, I think it's...
Yeah, Bill, you're on that one too.
Yeah, I can take care of it.
Yeah.
Is that...
Or I can be here too.
Oh, are they there?
Are they not, are they not in the studio?
They are not.
They're not.
Okay, let me see this one.
Ian, there's no one waiting in the lobby, right?
There are a bunch of people in the lobby.
Can you go ask if Verizon is there?
Verizon?
Somebody from Verizon, yes.
It was most of their department there.
Usually the applicant would be presenting this.
I thought so too.
Yeah, it would be, and the light department too should have been, should have been on.
Negative.
Nobody is owning up to it.
Okay. Should we proceed, or should we postpone, Tom?
I think it's straightforward.
So, Bill, are you prepared to make a presentation about this, or?
No.
No.
I mean, it's...
Postpone.
It's pretty rare to see an applicant fail to show in his own application.
Yeah, we told them, right? They were aware that they were on the...
Oh yeah. Oh, we had, we were very aware. There is one person online. I can't confirm if it's a Verizon person or not because their name isn't identified as their screen name, so I won't know until we bring this person over if it is Verizon or not.
Is this time sensitive, Phil?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, so all it is, is it's to support the Nahand Street. There's a subdivision that was done.
Yep.
And this is just to move the pole to accommodate a new driveway. I mean, honestly, I think it's pretty straightforward. You know, we've reviewed it, we provided your comments, we had two suggested conditions, and typically that would come back to my office during construction to make sure everything gets built properly, so.
Yeah, I'd continue it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, Madam Chair, move to continue the public hearing until such, until a date to be scheduled.
Well, I think you probably want to pick a particular date and time.
December 8?
Yeah, December 8.
All right, move to continue the public hearing to Monday, December 8, 2025. Do I need a time?
Yes.
At 7:03 PM?
Seconded.
Seconded, great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven zero unanimous.
And then there's a second one.
And then there's a second one. Sorry, Joe.
Just a question on the, first of all, do we need to open the hearing for that one? I guess not. But just a question on that one. Mr. Conway, for the second one, does that have any urgency, given that that's related to the school construction?
I am not 100% sure. If Bill is still there, he'd probably be much, could have marched up and been like that. Sorry, sorry to play musical chairs on.
That's okay.
I actually was questioning why this didn't even come before you. We don't own Hemlock Road, so that's a DCR property easement, right? So, I mean, technically, we own the land underneath it, Tom. So, I mean, is that, is that something that's even really needed here? I don't know how they could vote on it.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay.
All right, so I table that one.
So, do we move to continue that one, or move to table that one, Tom?
Why don't we continue it until 12:08 at 7:04?
All right. Madam Chair, move to continue the public hearing to December 8, 2025 at 7:04 PM.
Any further discussion?
Can we modify it to 7:05 for a water break?
All in favor? Six, seven zero, thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll see you next month. Going back to public participation. Is Paul online?
He's actually in the lobby.
Okay. Paul?
Councillor Ari.
And then also, Sheri, is there anyone else for public comment online?
No, just Paul.
Yes, have a seat. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody this evening?
Good, how are you?
So, I'm here as the Chair of the Wakefield Veterans Advisory Board, just to invite everybody to Veterans Day tomorrow at 11 o'clock at the Galvin Middle School. We have a host of local entertainment, okay, from the Wakefield Memorial High School, wind ensemble, to the choir. We also have several students from, for example, St. Joseph's School, the Girl Scouts reciting poems, and also doing the proclamation from the governor. Okay, so we'll see how that goes. So, we have a lot of what I would say unrehearsed talent. We haven't gotten everybody together for a dry run yet, but it is a, it's a classic event that involves what I call three generations of participants. This year, actually, with honoring Patsy Zegaria, okay, a Korean War veteran, okay, we actually will have four generations in the audience. Okay, so it's a pretty spectacular event, and I hope you all decide to come and enjoy it with us, and bring your family, bring your friends. And there is a correlation afterwards, okay, with a contribution from many of the restaurants here in town, about a dozen of them. The Veterans Advisory Board has gotten together to put together a decent meal of sandwiches and pizzas and things like that for lunch following the event. Okay. And I'm also here to accept any questions about the event. This is a terrific thing. Counselor Butt, thank you very much for speaking, and I look forward to your welcoming comments tomorrow.
You should never thank someone before they actually speak, but I, it's always a great event. Thank you for you and everyone who puts on such a great event.
Thank you for you and everyone who puts on such a great event every year. We're looking forward to it. I know Town Administrator Casey, it'll be her first Veterans Day in Wakefield. So, 11:00 AM on November 11th at the Galvin Middle School.
Correct.
Great, thank you so much for coming and sharing about it.
Thank you very much for having me. Have a good night.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item seven, Fire Chief Sullivan recognition. I'm sorry, Ian.
He's gonna go for tonight, though. He's doing really good escorting.
He's getting steps up.
We need a, we need a, like, speaker that goes, like, press a button and it goes.
Push a button, aging.
The bells, like in Downton Abbey. What's the dining room calling?
Hey, Chief Sullivan, you want to come up? Yeah, that would be great.
Somebody to say something. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming today. We all know that Chief Sullivan has announced his retirement. There will be a festivity, a thank you and a celebration on Wednesday, starting at 10 o'clock, at the Civic Center, but we wanted you, we wanted the Town Council to all wish you well and give you an opportunity for you to say whatever you wanted to say at our Town Council meeting. And I'm also realizing that before you leave, we should get a picture with the Town Council and the Town Administrator and you. But 41 years, thank you so much, and we just thought we'd give you the opportunity.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly humbled by the invitation, and I want to thank you all for that. You know, 41 years is a long time, you know? Basically, my entire adult life, I spent, you know, on the fire department. I literally grew up in the fire department. I think I'm grateful for the support of not just this board, but all the past boards since I, especially since I've been chief. I'm concerned in our present environment, politically, economically, that the department continues to, to get the support that it needs. We all know that Wakefield's grown by leaps and bounds, and unfortunately, a properly trained and properly equipped fire department is expensive. And I do appreciate everybody's support, you know, to date, and I, but I am concerned about the future, and I hope that Wakefield's bursting at the seams and growing and, unfortunately, the services that it provides to the citizens has to, has to keep pace and grow as well. But I am, it is extremely humbling to be called up. You guys all know how much I love being in the spotlight. So, I, seriously, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the invite, and I would look forward to a picture afterwards, that'd be great.
Yeah, we, we would love to do that. I'm just opening up, because I don't know if everyone can make it on a workday at 10, so just wanted to give everyone this opportunity. I'll go to Counselor Carney.
Chief, I think I've known you longest. I knew your dad and your uncle and the whole family, and I want to wish you the best. Last time I saw you, you were in Italy enjoying yourself, though.
I did have a very good time over there.
I wish I was back there myself. But congratulations to you and best luck in the future from myself, my brother Kevin County, Lieutenant Kevin County, and half family, and enjoy the rest of your life.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. Well, I, I just really am so grateful for everything that you've done. I mean, not only, you know, in the time that I've been on the council and the times that I've had the chance to sit down with you, but, you know, looking at your entire career and all of the service you've given to the town. I think one of the things that I really profoundly appreciate about you, Chief, is the compassion and the care that you show for the firefighters that work in the department. You know, both the individuals that are currently working there, but also thinking about the folks that have cycled through the department over the years. Like, you know, one of the events I love every year is the Firefighters Memorial Sunday, and I, I always appreciate the fact that you've done so much to try to keep the memories of the individuals who've served Wakefield, you know, prior to all of us and prior to everyone in the department, how you've worked so hard to keep those memories alive and to make sure that, you know, their families still know that they're part of the greater Wakefield community and the greater Wakefield firefighter community. So, thank you for everything that you've done. You've been a great leader for the department, a really wonderful example for the community, and I'm glad that even though you're retiring, we'll still get to have you in town as a, as a resident and neighbor, and we'll hopefully still get to see some great pictures from the, the exciting trips that you and your wife will be able to take more frequently now that you're no longer going to be working every day. So, thank you for everything that you've done.
Well, thank you. Firefighter Sunday's one of my, still one of my favorite events. It'll be a little strange for you being in the audience instead of being up at the podium, but I, I also won't have to work as hard as doing my research on the people that have passed, but definitely one of my favorite things is, is people both past and present that I've served with. Thanks.
Counselor Constance? Thank you so much for your service. It's, it's remarkable. There's so few people or places where you can get this third generation level of service that you and your family have offered to the town. And one thing that I want to comment on, well, two things. First of all, you have a lot of people, you probably can't see them on camera, a lot of your colleagues are here to support you, and that just speaks very highly of you, of you. So, yep, there we go. Thanks. Thank you, fellow Wakefield firefighters who have come to join us, to say thank you to the Chief. And I got to know you, Chief Sullivan, through, through your support of Troop 701, Boy Scout Troop. And there are a lot of Eagle Scouts in Wakefield who would not have gotten to where they are today but for your support and your mentoring and your motivation for them and with them. So, so not only have you been a terrific chief for the town in this capacity that we're celebrating you tonight, you've done a heck of a lot of service for the town of Wakefield that, you know, may not have fit exactly into the box of your day job, but your dedication to the town is just really remarkable. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Perhaps a sign that it's time for me to leave is that I'm working with grandchildren of people that I started with. So, thanks, though. Thank you.
Counselor Butler?
Well, speaking of which, Chief, the, the Chief was my introduction into sort of town government. I think my first subcommittee that I was on was the Fire Department Subcommittee for the Finance Committee, and he, he spent, you know, six, I don't think they were like, you know, the most wonderful for him years going over the Fire Department budget, but I will say, he always did it expressly with the thought of making sure that the town was as safe and that the firefighters were as taken care of, and that really thinking of, like, the town and the community first. And for that, like, it was always refreshing to deal with the Chief. I'm not sure he can say the same about me, but, but no, it was, it was wonderful working with you all these years.
Well, I appreciate that, though. Thanks very much.
I just want to add after Counselor Fox.
I thought we were going in order.
No, no, go ahead.
So, Mike, thanks for everything you've done for the town. Luckily, I've only had you involved in one firefighter capacity thing in my life, so can you cross for that? Your service to the town is commendable. You raised two great kids that also worked really hard in this town. Marching band and scouts in the Fourth of July Parade. I don't have your time for any of that stuff, along with a very stressful job. So, thank you for everything you've done for me and for the town.
Thanks, Brian.
Counselor Chrisley?
Chief, I didn't have a really opportunity to work with you in any, any great, long-term capacity, but doing 40, 41 years at any job is, is a real, is a real feather in your cap and certainly one with as much responsibility than emergency responder service that you have. So, thank you very much for your service to Wakefield.
Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate what everyone said. You have led your team with compassion and dedication over the last 41 years. I think, I think about some of the issues that I've dealt with on Town Council with the Fire Department. And one of the first big projects you and I worked on together was getting a new fire truck, which I think any day we'll be getting. No. But I, you know, I learned a lot about that process, but every time we had a tragedy in town and I spoke to you about it, you immediately asked, you told me how your team was doing and what your team needed. So, after the church fire during the pandemic, your concern was always your team. It did not go unnoticed that they were your number one priority, and you did everything with compassion to promote and protect your team, your department. And so, I really appreciate that in all the conversations. I remember going to a Thanksgiving event at one of the churches after the church fire, and people were asking how you were doing, and you just kept on saying, "I could use a hug." That's Chief there. He could use a hug right now. We could all use a hug after that, after that church fire. So, I do want to thank you, Counselor Carney.
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate to make the motion to buy the next pumper truck while the Chief is here in honor of his retirement? I would move that we accept the contract with Seagray Fire Department at the cost of, I'm trying to get the cost down here correctly, $1,329,030 and $30 for the procurement of a new pumper truck.
I will second.
I'm just gonna go all, all in favor. Say aye. Seven, zero, unanimous, thank you.
A little slow on the hand there, Doug.
It wasn't.
I'm not gonna ruin the retirement.
That was good, Counselor Carney. Good job. Does anyone else want to add anything? There will be more opportunity on Wednesday at 10 o'clock at the Civic Center. Counselor?
Just one, one other thing. I mean, given, you know, your, your wife and your children sitting here, I just want to thank all of, you know, the three of you for sharing, Mike, with us all these years. I mean, this is a, you know, it's hard to be a family member of someone who's an active duty firefighter and someone who's in this role, and, you know, you all have also contributed to the town and everything that you do and all the things that you volunteer for, but thank you to Mike's family for, for, for really, you know, making sure that we've gotten the chance to benefit from his great work and his leadership in town. Sorry.
No, I think that's, that's true. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna pause for a second and take a picture with Chief. Okay, I don't, we've never done this before, so we're gonna do that.
I'm trying to have some friend right here.
Yes, and then we will be right back. Hello, welcome back. That was a great, great opportunity to celebrate someone very important to our town. And we will move on to item 8B, the Fire Department Ambulance Contract. Tom, can I?
We did the fire engine.
You didn't say yes on that one.
Ambulance. So, yeah, the ambulance contract that's before you is with Cataldo. It's an extension for three years of their existing contract, and it, like the existing contract, it does not involve any direct payment by the town of Wakefield to Cataldo. I've looked it over, made just some trivial changes, and I, one thing that, you know, I always look for is indemnification clauses. The only indemnities here are by Cataldo to the town. So, there's, they avoided all the pitfalls that I generally try to find in a, in any contract I review. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
And we met with Cataldo and Tom Walsh and Sheri and Liz and I met, and we had a really good meeting, a very productive meeting, and they're very much willing to be partners with the community and offer some things like free employee training for first aid and CPR, so we will absolutely be taking them up on that.
Trump, move ya.
And I, I see that it's a three-year contract?
Yes.
When is it up?
November.
Like, what, is it up?
It goes from November 25 to November 28.
That's why we're renewing it now is because it's.
Correct.
But let's, let's do some questions before the motion. Is it, oh, we can do the motion and second it, but then. But let's do questions first. Counselor Butler?
I guess I am always concerned when, A, when a contract that is sort of relatively, it isn't large from a dollar amount, but it's large from an importance amount, comes before us and doesn't have, you know, we, and I assume we did competitive bidding six years ago, we haven't done it for this clearly. The other question is, I'm always concerned when a contract comes before us and the price is zero. So, if the price is zero, should the price, like, if it was a competitive situation, should the town be getting paid for allowing Cataldo to provide this service? Again, should the town be getting paid for allowing a private company to come in and presumably a for-profit private company to come in and operate as our ambulance company?
Counselor Chines?
Maybe just, just some history, since I think you and I were the only two on the council when we, we did this. when we, we did this. We actually did a, a full bidding process when Cataldo came on board. We had previously been with, I think, Action Ambulance.
Yeah.
And opened it up to bids. Tom Walsh had led the process six years ago. And we got bids from, I think it was four different companies, including Action, Cataldo, and two others. So there, there was a process that was followed at that point, including some very specific requirements around service that were intended to address some of the issues that we had had. In terms of the payment piece, this is actually a pretty standard way that communities contract for ambulance services. The ambulance service itself is a, is a billable service under health insurance and Medicaid. You know, just from working in the healthcare space, I'm not aware of other, I mean, not to say that there aren't any, but I, I think it's, it's pretty unusual for ambulance providers to kind of, you know, offer a payment for, you know, for, for, you know, provision of service. And there may be some kind of kickback reasons, anti-kickback reasons why that's also, it may not actually be permitted.
Okay. But I'm not sure. I guess the other question is, just because we did it RFP six years ago, that doesn't sound to me like why we wouldn't, why we wouldn't look to other bidders currently.
Councillor Carney.
Yep, there's, there's a lot of nuances on this. You know, they show up at places where they're not making any money. They respond in emergency. And often, they don't pick up, they might not pick up patients. They, they respond to an accident, they respond when they're called. There's a lot of goodwill involved. And the real measurement of this is, we let them walk out the door. The chief, we should have had the fire chief here and the police chief because they can appreciate what happens out in the field when they call for assistance from, from, from the ambulance provider. I was on the first contract back in the 70s when we first went out. And the real benefit to town back then was working with comp clients. You know, we had, we had firefighters and, and, and police officers going out with, with back injuries and, and doing things they probably shouldn't have been, they weren't trained to do. So I think we would have to think about that long and smart. And I have no problem with looking at that, but I don't think you want to do it at this point in time. I think you want to say, okay, three years from now, let's watch this. And then, then measure it then to say, oh, do you, do you really want to go out? Because I'm not sure what the competitiveness is you're gonna measure service. And you can't really measure service until they, they provided it. And this ambulance program has been, has been good to the town. So I think those are the ways you measure them.
We've been pretty good to them as well. We have been pretty good to them as well. And again, I think they are, they are all for-profit businesses. They are not doing the ambulance service out of the goodness of their hearts. And nor should they. But I think it's also, it's also unfortunate to bring forth, like, you know, a big contract in addition to the big pumper truck when you've, you've got an interim fire chief. Or I think it's interim, but.
Yes.
Yes.
Interim or acting, I'm not sure. And, you know, or our town administrator is, you know, approaching three months on the job. So I, I just feel like if this feels like it should have been, you know, at what point do you bring it up for a bid? I mean, and granted, like, I guess, what's, because you all are, Jonathan, you're a best practices guy. Six years feels like a lo, nine years feels like a long time to give a company without having them competitively price their option. And if they're pricing it at zero, if it's competitive, probably somebody is gonna price it at negative, if you ask. I guess is my only pushback is that should, I'm not sure that it is a service that either we shouldn't be providing ourselves or that we shouldn't be getting paid for from the for-profit organization. That is the ambulance care.
Let me just go to Councillor Constance.
I'm liaison to the fire department. And I actually did meet with the chief over the summer about exactly this. You know, we, it was during a, you know, meeting about a number of things. And he actually mentioned that the contract is up. And I said, you know, well, tell me about it because I'm completely unfamiliar with how it works and such. And he was very clear that, A, the town is very pleased with the service. B, one of the advantages of Cataldo is that you're physically located in Wakefield. So the response time is, is quite favorable. And that he had worked with, see, with Kevin Walsh pretty closely and had, you know, many conversations about changing and, and renewing, et cetera, et cetera. So it, I came away with this strong impression that it was a very well-thought-out process on the town side.
Did you ask him, did you have anybody else? Did you have anybody else in to, you know, bid or did you entertain other offers?
This is Cataldo.
I'm talking to Cataldo.
I just answered the, again, going back to the last time we did the full bidding process. So none of the other bidders proposed paying money into the town. And again, I, you know, this is where, you know, there would be a legal question. But I mean, there are like pretty strict guidelines in the healthcare space around paying for volume of services. And so I, I really don't think that that is a likely outcome in this process. You know, in terms of thinking of insourcing ambulance, you know, that's definitely something that, you know, we could look at. I, I would say, though, that the time that it would take to evaluate that is such that I think if you started doing that process in year one for your contract, it would take you a long time to get there. It is a very, very difficult service to operate, which is why, you know, we've historically, I mean, I would imagine when you guys kind of made the decision years and years ago, why we outsource this.
My nephew is a firefighter in authority and they have been in service stuff. And it becomes very, very controversial in the sense, it, you know, when, you need at least 15 people. At least 15 healthy people. Now all of a sudden, you, you gotta backfill them if they're out injured or they, something happens. When you're in a small town like this, you can't just put things together like that simply without thinking about how you're gonna back it up and how you're gonna cover it. And so it, there's something, if you wanted to look at that, you'd have to study it over a long period of time and do, have an expert come in and evaluate finances. Because I honestly, previously, I was involved with, I'm not sure you're aware, the, the original police department was designed around people who wanted to have central dispatching. They wanted to go to civilian dispatches. And when that question came up, I was working in the city of Worcester and I worked with the public safety people in Worcester, where they had a set of group of people who dispatched for ambulance, police, and fire in a centralized location. But the amount of people it took in a big city, it worked. But if we brought it down to a small town and you say, okay, just to cover the shifts, I need 11 people. But then what happens if one of them's out sick or one gets injured? Where do you get the backfill? Well, you're gonna ask the police and firefighters to backfill a position that might have eliminated their job? It doesn't work that way. So it, I don't mind looking at it. If someone wants to propose looking at that sometime in the future. But I think we've got a great deal right now and I think we ought to stick with it.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so my name's Robert White. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for Cataldo Ambulance. I, I spent my Thanksgiving night here back in 2019 when we took over the contract. And I, and I showed up at 11 o'clock at night. And let me tell you what's changed in the six years for Cataldo Ambulance in the town of Wakefield. So when we got awarded this contract, we gave you one ALS ambulance and a BLS ambulance. So there was an advanced life support and a basic life support. And we were living in trailers because we didn't have a base location. In the last three years, we now own 200 Water Street. We put, it's, it's an over, close to $3 million building with everything that we've done there. And we've really invested in Wakefield. The contract that you guys are looking at today is different than the one we signed in 2019, where now you're getting two paramedic units instead of just one. So now you have two paramedic units that are dedicated to the town of Wakefield. You also have two BLS units that are parked in Wakefield that are available to do other calls within Wakefield, as well as they'll do transfers out of Melrose, Wakefield, or Winchester Hospital, coming back into Wakefield or Melrose. But they're, they're in this area. So we staff four ambulances out of 200 Water Street. We're committed to your community. We've been here for six years. We have a great working relationship with the fire department, with Tom Walsh and the police department. So I'm, I'm here every Fourth of July for 16 hours because I, I really do like this town and I'm personally invested in it myself. So we appreciate the opportunity to serve you guys for another three years.
Thank you.
Just as, do you pay any other community for services?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing out.
No.
Councillor Fox.
So one note of your work on the Fourth of July. Having been at many meetings with you and seen you on the day itself. I appreciate you investing in the town. You guys do a great job from everything I see. My only question is, back to the RFP taking place three years ago, how frequently should we be doing agreements like that? Is there a standard to go back or?
There's no legal requirement of an RFP at all for ambulance service.
And I think the reason we did it three years ago is we, there were concerns with the previous six years ago. There were, there were concerns. And so that's why we did it. So if there's not concerns, we haven't done it out.
I remember some of those when that came up.
Yeah, yeah, it was, they were not great. Dee, just speaking about contracts, I feel like it would be great going into January of the new year if there's a list somewhere of all the contracts that we have and when they're up for renewal. I've actually never seen anything like that. And earlier today, we were just talking about, you know, which, which, which unions are up what year. It was all, it used to be in our previous TA's head. But I think a document like that, because like this just, three years goes by really quickly. And I think if we, really nice that Councillor Constance heard about it over the summer, but it just wasn't on my radar. So I think if we had a document like that, that every year got updated about contracts and what, when their renewals are, that would be really helpful for us. Okay, any other further questions or a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the Contract for Comprehensive Emergency Ambulance System Service with Cataldo Ambulance is presented.
Sir.
Great, any further discussion? All in favor? Seven zero, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
We'll see you July 4th.
I might have said my manager this year.
Do you have a question for?
No, I don't. I actually had a question about the fire engine contract, even though I understand that we've approved it. Is it too late to ask a question? Okay. I, I couldn't believe that it takes four years to build a truck.
Oh, yeah.
Wow. So if we, so we approved the vast majority of the funding at town meeting in April. And we're only just now getting to the contract. So we've already lost, you know, six months. So it's really like four years and six months?
This is like dealing with a government defense contractor. You know, it's, it's the worst of all possible worlds. It's a contract so big that you, you, you can't avoid dealing with these people. And it's a world where it demonstrates the importance of antitrust law because there are only two or three companies in the whole country that make equipment of the kind that we need. So this particular company promises no more than that they will produce a fire engine for us within 1,500 days. They originally quoted a, a price that we went to town meeting and relied on and got an appropriation in that amount. And then they increased the price by 300,000, no, by $50,000. I told our new town administrator, and it was no surprise for her, we can't sign a contract without the money. So I can't believe how much negotiation there was between me and the company about the fact that we can't commit to spend money we haven't appropriated. The deal ultimately worked out is that by next annual town meeting, at the next annual town meeting, we will seek the remaining $50,000. But it doesn't end there. Because a year short of the date when they expect to make delivery, they will get back to us with yet another price, which will be a function of inflation generally and also the specific inflation for this industry. And they will give us an option at that point to get out of the contract without penalty if we don't want to go to town meeting to get a further appropriation.
Meantime, your truck is half-built.
No, the truck will not be built at all at that point. This is a year shy. It takes them about a year to actually build it. So when they think it's about a year from the point where they're going to be prepared to deliver, they will contact us with a new price.
So what's the three years for? We're just in queue?
The backlog.
Oh, my gosh, wow.
The benefits of private equity owning the three companies.
Now we know what business to get into. Jiminy crickets, wow. Plus tariffs, I see all over this too. Oh, we're not making any promises about tariffs. Yeah, but not from, not from all the parts. Yeah, oh, my goodness.
Yeah, actually, the tariffs were a big part of this contract. The ambiguity created by the administration's tariff policy is one, one thing the company relied on repeatedly in saying that they would not commit to a definite price. The best they could do would be to give us an opportunity to get out of the contract if future price increases were unacceptable to us.
That's ugly. Those are my questions. Thank you.
No worries. It was good to get clarification. That, this is the second one. So we, my first or second year, we ordered one. And I remember, I feel like it took longer than four years, though, but.
I think that was the ladder truck. Was it the regular engine? Ladder truck took a long time to make.
It took a long time, but I don't remember.
We did, we did another pumper, at least in my six years. The ladder truck was before me, though, because those, those have like a even, that's even a lot, a larger price tag and a longer lead time, apparently.
Okay, item 8C, North Avenue Licensing Agreement. If you could introduce yourselves.
Certainly. Good evening, councilors. My name is Attorney Jesse Schumer, representing the developer of 596 North Avenue. Zero North Ave, Wakefield LLC is the, the name of the entity. With me tonight is Joe Pride, representing ownership and management of the project.
How you doing?
So, councilors, we're here tonight with respect to a proposed land use agreement. And we did send copies to, to all of you, but I do have paper copies if anyone would like one or doesn't have a copy already. But just by way of a little bit of background, this project, as you know, was proposed under Chapter 40B. I was actually just looking at my notes while we were waiting to be heard tonight. And we were before you exactly four years and six months to the date to present this project, before it went to the subsidizing agency and before it went to the Zoning Board of Appeals or Conservation Commission. During the review of the project by the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was a discussion with the board regarding some opportunities to provide some improvements within the layout of the town's right-of-way for North Avenue, which was unusually wide. And so with the property line being where it was, the, the project would have been set back fairly far from the roadway. So the zoning board recognized the opportunity to use some of that space to make some improvements with stormwater management structures, investment management practices, some landscaping, and some other elements. So that's what we're here tonight to discuss with the council. The, one of the conditions of the comprehensive permit that was issued by the zoning board required us to come before you with a proposal for a license agreement, which would provide for the developer's ability to develop these improvements within the town's right-of-way, while also giving the town adequate protections to ensure that the, the improvements were, would be perpetually repaired and maintained at the sole cost of the developer and owner of the project, as well as no liability to the town for those improvements within the right-of-way, as well as the option, if the town finds that there's a need to, to dedicate that land to other public purposes, to revoke the license. And, and that space would revert to town control in that, in that instance. So the, the proposed license agreement, which is before you, it has several plans, which are engineering plans and landscaping plans. Those outline the proposed improvements with. Those outline the proposed improvements within the right-of-way that I've outlined just a, just a moment ago. The proposed license agreement has been reviewed by your council, as well as your Director of Public Works, and I believe approved as to form by both of them, but I'll, of course, let them speak for themselves. But that, with that, councilors, that concludes my remarks and we're open and available for any questions you might have.
Anything to add, Tom?
No, I have looked over this in detail and it's perfectly acceptable to me. It's largely based on a similar document that is involved in the 200 Quanipowit property.
And is Joe still on the line? Anything to add, Joe?
Nope, I'll go from the center.
Any questions or comments from my councilors? Counselor Chrisley?
Just looking at the drawings, it doesn't look like it changes the, the actual usable width of the road anyway. You're talking about from the, right away from the curb towards the property line. Is that, is that basically a fair statement?
That's, that's absolutely correct. The, the width of the roadway does not change at all. And then also as part of the project where we have installed new sidewalks, there was also a crosswalk across North Avenue and a rapid flashing beacon for pedestrian safety.
Is that the one at Willard Street that I see here on the drawing? Is that the?
I believe.
Is that the crossing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carney?
The question John just asked, you're not infringing it at all on the roadway?
Not at all.
So I don't understand what the agreement's about.
So what we discovered when we were developing the, the project site is North Avenue, the town's right-of-way, is unusually wide. So the paved width of North Avenue is, I want to say probably about 25, 30 feet. The actual width of the town's right-of-way was significantly wider than that. So there was an area of land between the paved roadway and the property line that was essentially going to go unused. So that's what the, the zoning board identified that opportunity to put some landscaping, some street trees, some walkways, really try to spruce up the site, which we think it's, they've done a good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve the license agreement between Zero North Ave Wakefield LLC and the town of Wakefield as presented.
Second. Great, any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye, seven zero. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good eye.
Moving on to item D, Traffic Advisory Committee Recommendations.
Hey, folks. So recommendation today for the traffic advisory committee, so we met at our October 17th meeting to discuss some parking restrictions on the northbound section of Main Street between, basically by the Dunkin' Donuts and Mo's Barber Shop. So the owner of Mo's Barber Shop had reached out to us regarding some parking that was, that was going on with basically just a, a person that was consistently parked there all the time, taking up one of the available spaces for the business. We've kind of used similar restrictions to restrict the, to one-hour parking across the street, so we're looking to kind of follow suit. We also look to restrict the parking time from, between 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM to allow for some queuing that happens because of the North Ave intersection on Main Street. And we've received some complaints from other folks on that, so we can kill two birds with one stone. So the proposal before you would be no parking 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM and one-hour parking restriction 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM between, on the northbound side, between 6:50 Main and 6:42 Main. And then on the southbound side, between 6:27 Main and 6:49, we would do no parking 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 10:00 AM signs, and then one-hour parking 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And there's a sketch included within the packet.
Any questions? Counselor Carney?
No. Within the last few months, we've always, we've been talking about signage and we were talking about reducing signage.
Sure.
And I find signage here awfully confusing and somewhat, you know, you know, you can park one time, then you're going to have one-hour parking at a, at a later, later time. It's.
Definitely not conventional.
It's a lot of signs.
Yep.
Counselor Constance?
So it's 10 signs for one troublesome car that's kind of bothering a business?
On the other, on the other side, there already are signs.
Has our, is our parking enforcement officer helping our business out?
Yep, and he actually made some modifications. He's the one that, that asked to have the, the no parking between 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM added to it as part of that. So he's received a bunch of complaints on that, where folks basically get stuck trying to take that left-hand turn coming northbound and that queues back past the Dunkin' Donuts, past these businesses. So folks trying to go straight on Main Street can't do that. So that's the intent with, with those signs. And then the parking restriction is pretty similar to what we've done in other locations for, for businesses to, to support their business. And both, both business owners were on the meeting and were supportive.
I feel like it's almost a reading test, you know? It was, and then I thought, ooh, if I want to run in and get coffee, I have to, it's five minutes to nine, I'm just gonna, I'm probably gonna, anyway, I, I, I thought it was, I thought it was a lot of signs. I thought it was, that intersection is, there's a lot happening in that intersection anyway. I, I, I must be honest, I obviously very much support our local businesses, but this seems like a lot and I, I wish I had confidence that it was going to solve the issue that they're having. I've, I don't love this design. Not, don't take it personally.
I'm not taking it personally.
Counselor Chrisley?
Because we have had a lot of discussion, Bill, about appropriate signage and where it goes. Is, is there, there's, is this, this is just signing on an existing policy? Because we have no parking restrictions on the northbound side now?
On the southbound side, it was, it was done and approved by the council. I was here, so maybe five or six years ago, I want to say. And so the problem also happens on the other side with the queuing, so that would fix the queuing problem and then the request from the business owner. There are only four or five, four spots, I think, out there.
Just the barber shop?
If you have, yeah, for the barber shop has two and then two in front of the pizza place. So if you have four spots, you're taking up 25% of the spots with one person that's constantly there, then, you know, obviously reduces their parking capacity. So that's what the traffic advisories thought was. But again, it's up to you folks on what you think.
Did traffic advisory?
Go ahead, Counselor Chrisley.
Did traffic advisory for that, for that section going northbound, did they consider painting the no parking or no parking here to corner, parking, spray painting that on the road and reducing at least a few of the signs?
Well, there's a no parking section, I mean, there's a no parking section right, right in front of the dunks, all the way to the, to the intersection.
Okay.
So that, that wouldn't necessarily need to be parked, we have two lanes. And then we wouldn't paint it on the road, because I mean, it's only being restricted during certain times, so that typically you're going to look for a parking sign to see if you can park, so.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Butler?
Yeah, I think, I think I like the idea of the northbound side having that no parking 6 to 9, just because I think for people going in that timeframe, going to Galvin and a lot of the people for going from, going potentially to the high school up Nahand. I mean, it gets blocked both ways around that intersection and it's always going to be, but at least freeing up that additional sort of secondary quote-unquote lane of traffic at those hours to allow like, you know, people who are going to the high school to quickly make that right and frees up some, it feels like that would free up some. And granted, yes, it is proposing a new reading challenge for people, but. You know, but no, the other thing is knowing like how much one random car parked on the road and especially, we used to have that trouble in going to the Galvin, like if one of the people uses that merchant parking at, you know, 7:45 AM, it creates havoc for everybody going to, going to the school. So it, you know, I don't like that we have to have like these dribs and drabs of things, but I think, yeah, maybe this will make life better for those people going to those schools at that time. I wouldn't do it for the one, you know, sorry, Mo's, I wouldn't do it for you, but I think freeing up that no parking 6 to 9 makes a lot of sense.
There wasn't a question buried in there, that was more me.
I was waiting. More so than Counselor Carney, I'm not a fan of signs, so do we need the one-hour parking? I understand the no parking as someone who lives on this part of town and drives there.
So I mean, again, it comes down to the use of those spaces and getting the turnover that the business needs to survive. I mean, if you think about it, there really isn't any parking in that area, so that, that's why it's needed. I think it's up to you folks on what you think. When we looked at it, it seemed to warrant it. It's, both businesses there are high turnover businesses, so that it would be good to have the restriction to allow them to, to get, folks to get in and out and support their uses. That was basically the dialogue we had and where we came to that, so that recommendation.
Counselor Fox?
So is this person parking there all day?
Oh, yeah.
As in, so the 6 to 10 might be enough to, these buses in the area, you're not really walkable to the train, but I'm wondering if it's a situation where if they're not parked there between 6 and 10, maybe they won't be parked there for the day? Or is that not really the case?
Well, that's the intent, that during the day, during the business hours, when the businesses are there, that, that there would be a one-hour parking restriction, right, for the businesses. And then overnight, that's fine to be used, that's kind of how it's been sketched up here, right? And then having the morning restricted to make sure that we can get the traffic through, I mean, I think that makes the most sense for sure.
No, I love the 6 to 10 because that area is, it gets backed up. I mean, people just go into Dunkin' Donuts, never mind people trying to go to the schools or work.
And that's, and that's a common call that we get.
Yeah.
With the TAC. So I mean, I think that definitely makes a ton of sense. The parking restriction, honestly, I mean, I think it does support the businesses, that's the intent. I mean, if you have, you know, four spaces out there and someone's in, you're losing 25% of your spaces all the time, I mean, that's a, that's a tough situation.
Yeah, I used to pick up pizza when it was leases and you'd struggle to find somewhere to park just to run in for a minute, so I understand.
Yep.
Counselor Constance?
I thought we had a town-wide two-hour parking rule.
No.
We don't, okay, okay.
So the way it works is we have a whole set of.
Just downtown, okay.
Parking and traffic rules. And so as your role as the road commissioners, we come in and we do these applications that come to you and you basically create the restriction. So if you don't go for it, then the police can't restrict it, or can't enforce it.
Counselor Carney?
Bill, what, what's the downside of just saying, put in one-hour parking?
Well, I think you'd still have somebody parked in the morning, right?
Then you have traffic control to take care of it.
If it's one-hour parking, I mean.
Well, if they.
If they're standing, I mean, I think from enforcement. I, I hear where you're coming from. It's just from an enforcement standpoint, you'd have to wait during one of those hours in peak hour to tag it and tow it, right?
But if, if I'm stopping at a place where I know there's one-hour restriction, I know I got to be back in an hour. So it's for some purpose that you can do in an hour.
Yeah, when we talked about it at the TAC, we, we didn't think that that would work. So, you know, and then plus, and you know, really, I think, you know, and I want to speak for Lieutenant Anderson, but he, he was adamant about having it no parked in the morning.
Who, who was adamant?
Joe Anderson, Lieutenant Anderson.
Oh, Lieutenant Anderson.
Yeah, yeah. He got, he's told me he's got a bunch of complaints since I've taken over as the chair, I've received a bunch as well. So we definitely have that as a, as a frequent comment.
Counselor Chrisley?
I got a nerd question for you, Bill. Is there no like manual of uniform traffic control devices that could combine these signs?
No. No, if I thought there was, I would have, yeah.
Right, okay.
Unfortunately, yeah, there isn't one.
So this is like the standard signage?
Yeah, typically you're not going to have folks driving over like where the spaces would be in general, but in this case, you really want to do that to free up the traffic lane.
Counselor Carney?
About one-hour parking, 10, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
If that's what you want to change it to, we, I mean, we have that in there. We had it as nine to.
No, I don't want them parking, we don't want them parking there at all at that time, because we want that space free and clear.
That's what I said, after, after 10:00 AM, you don't want any parking. Before 10:00 AM, you don't want a parking.
Yeah.
So I just said one-hour parking, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
But they would have known that you can't do no parking.
We'd have to sign it as no parking else, otherwise.
I'm opposed to all those signs.
I, I'm actually the opposite of Counselor Carney. I like the no parking and I don't know if we wait on the one-hour parking signs for right now.
Okay.
And maybe you can report back to us. I understand, I think to clear up that intersection is good. I just think the one-hour parking adds a lot. I think if there's like a trouble person, we got to come up with another way to deal with one car. And I think that might deal with it, right?
Well, unless you restrict it, you know, unless you restrict it, the, you know, police can't really do much.
You're, there are just a few extra letters.
No, it's like six, five more signs.
No, 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 but you're, you've got to put up the signs anyway for no parking from that time. They don't have those signs anyway. So like if we say that we want.
These are two different signs.
We were proposing it as two separate signs on the post. We can combine that if you want us to, we can come up with something, I guess, but it's.
Oh, I was thinking, they're two separate signs, not one sign that says all of that.
Yeah, I know, I care about the number of poles, I guess I don't care about the number of signs on the pole.
You'd have your, yeah, a couple of posts.
That isn't the, from the traffic advisory committee, that's not the ones we're, that's not the thing we're getting the most commentary about.
How dare you? That's December 8th.
We actually, we got, we, I feel like my first year, the inter, the car rental, there was some, there, that, I got question, like a, a few my first year.
Yeah.
And then we were considerate, like we wanted to make sure that the, the dog park, there was parking for people going to the dog park, which is a little further out.
A little bit further up, yeah.
But I actually, like, yeah, I haven't really gotten any comments or concerns about this from the businesses either.
Yeah, they reached out to us for sure, so.
They do, yeah, no, no. I, and I trust you evaluated it. Any other comments, questions?
Do I have a motion?
So I'll make a motion to install the, the no parking 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM signs northbound and no parking 6:00 AM to, is that 10, 10:00 AM southbound as, as presented. The, the intent of my motion, I, I think we can, I would suggest we hold off on the one-hour parking signs just to see how it goes. And I mean, the posts are there, so if that's something we need to come back and discuss, if we find that that problem persists, then we can kind of take that up then. So the motion, sorry, this is a long-winded motion, but the motion would be to install the no parking signs 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM northbound and 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM southbound as presented.
And not the one-hour parking.
Correct.
Which does not at all address the businesses' concerns of a car that is parked all day out there.
So I think the intention would be to see if the parking restriction in the morning, depending on when that individual parks, if that takes care of the issue. If it doesn't and it still remains an issue, then this can come back to the council for future decision. And again, a one-hour par, at that point, the posts are already up, so if we wanted to install a one-hour parking sign, it would be a low-cost effort.
How many new posts? Because some of them, some of them are taking one sign down and putting new signs up, so.
So the new posts would be on the.
One, two, three, four.
We have three on the northbound side and the other ones are already installed.
Two new ones on the northbound side, though, right? So one is existing, the two that are labeled as proposed would be new.
Right, and we're getting those no matter what.
If we do something.
If you do anything, you're getting a poll.
If we do this.
So I think the question is on the one-hour parking, because, you know, what we've found is, and so since we got the request, I've obviously spent a bunch of time driving through and just paying attention to it, obviously, in my travels, and there's somebody parked there.
Is it an overnight parker or?
What's that?
Is it an overnight parker, we feel like?
It would be an overnight parker for sure, and then during the day, for most of the day. So I see, so I see them there all the time.
So I need to, you need to see if I need to second my motion, but I guess the, the request with the motion would be if we could monitor, you know, if the parking, if, if that individual continues to park there consistently, you know, I would certainly entertain the idea of adding the one-hour parking sign. entertain the idea of adding the one hour parking signs at a later date. But the intent is to start small.
Second.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry.
Don't, don't worry about it. I, I assume that the, the person, maybe the significant other is someone who lives in that apartment building who may not have parking. And if they can't park there between 6:00 and 10:00 a.m., they'd be getting up very early to move their car or not parking there at all. So that could solve the problem by itself.
We shall see.
That's how we know.
Report back. Yeah. So all in favor, say aye, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
For culvert or?
Item.
For the culvert?
Yeah, let's, let's, we're going to move up item I, the culvert asset management project. Do you have some big news to tell us?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We received a $275,000 grant to, to inventory, conditioned inventory, and actually just a regular inventory of our, of our culverts. So that's including some videotaping and, um, in sections that we can't get to. And then also coming up with a capital plan for culvert replacements in the future. So, so pretty successful. This is the third asset management grant that we've received through this program in the past three years. So it's, uh, it's been good for Wakefield for sure, so.
Who issues the grant, Bill?
What's that?
Who issues the grant?
DEP.
DEP?
Yep, yep. So we also received one for, for sewer ties and then we, or for sewer services. And then we also received one for our water services as well. So we've been building out our, our data layers with that. So it's good.
This is, um, this is unique.
It's unique.
Doing a, a culvert assessment for?
Actually, it's pretty common. Most communities are doing it. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's kind of, yeah, I mean, you got to make sure they're flowing, so.
So we don't have a record of all of our culverts?
We have spotty records, I would say. Yeah. And, and so some sections, we don't know where they go. There's other sections where we haven't actually, because they're so long and go through, you know, like we know the culvert that goes underneath the Galvin Middle School, you know, we haven't looked at a lot of these things in, in time. So there's long sections of it through downtown and then down on Water Street that, you know, just don't get inspected. So you know, you know, there's an issue when there's a problem because everyone's getting flooded. So we try to be proactive here, so.
Is there a time limit on this, when it needs to be completed by?
They're going to be working over the next year to complete it. Yeah.
And, and are we doing it internal or we're hiring people?
No, we're hiring somebody for this one. Yeah.
Very cool. Well, congratulations. Good job to you and your team.
Madam Chair, I'll move to authorize Town Administrator Denise Casey to serve as the certifying authority for the Culvert Asset Management Project presented.
Second.
Seconded, great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, seven zero, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, Department of Public Works surplus equipment. Hi, Joe.
How are you? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
We can.
All right. My apologies for not being with you. I'm burning the candle at both ends a little bit today. So, um, for anybody that may not know me, I'm Joe Conway, Public Works Director. This item essentially is our request to the Town Council to surplus some assets that we have that are no longer either being used or about to be retired and replaced. Just some history in this. So as Tom, Mr. Mullen, excuse me, described the process of buying a fire truck, the process of acquiring some of the assets that we have could be the second worst of all possible worlds in some cases, especially when you get some of the larger things. The expectation is that we won't receive delivery on some things for between 400 and 500 days. What we found because of, you know, commodities and COVID and all the other things that you could, you know, blame the supply chain and labor woes on, is that, especially in the vehicle world, that the ability to solicit trade-in values from the auto dealers and manufacturers and things like that, nobody wants to put the risk out there because it takes so long for the vehicles to come in. So what we've done, and it all started, I can tell you a story someday, but a weed harvester that we ended up selling this way. But what we've ended up doing is asking the council in a situation like this to surplus the vehicles. We put them, or the assets, you know, you name it, it could be anything that's being retired. We put those out to public auction, which allows us not only to get into some of the wholesale markets, but it also allows us to get in some of the secondary part markets where these things have some pretty decent value still left in them. And to really turn over every stone to find a buyer for it for whatever use that they are trying to get out of it and return the best amount of money or income that we can back to the town. So this is a list here for you. All of it is, you know, slated to be sold to the highest bidder and deposited into the general fund with the exception of item 10. That's actually a sewer division vehicle. And hopefully we net very nice returns and can get that back over into the towns coffers ASAP.
Great. Joe, just, just, um, next time you write a memo, just make sure you get the right chair in there.
My apologies.
That's okay. I just noticed as well, but.
Maybe I copied and pasted it the last time we did this.
Is this the right surplus list, though? Making sure you're not giving one from two years ago.
No, no, this is absolutely right. So the last time we did something like this was during calendar year 2024. So hence the incorrect title to the chair.
Any other questions or comments?
Got my eye on that 2007 Impala.
I'm sure that was lightly used, too.
Lightly used, low mileage. I could have some fun with a Chevy Kodiak that was lifted off and that could be, you know?
What is a Chevy Kodiak?
It is a truck that I've never heard of. And apparently it's been owned for $12,000 used right now with 140,000 miles on it. So there's a value to them.
It is large and in charge. And Counselor Fox, you would certainly be king of the road.
I'll be the highest bidder. I could use a little bit of that.
Well, in, in the interest of allowing Counselor Fox to achieve his goal of buying a 1997 Chevy Kodiak, um, I have moved to authorize the Department of Public Works to auction the retired surplus equipment as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, or raise your hand, seven zero. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
We're selling the trash truck after the strike ended.
It's a good time.
Might get a lot of money for it. Linfield could use it. Item F.
Madam Chair, move to transfer the interest from 2022 in the amount of $210.70, from 2023 in the amount of $1,040.96, and from 2020, uh, sorry, 2024 in the amount of $1,659.26 from the Cowdery Fund to the Wakefield Garden Club.
Second.
Any further discussion or explanation?
I was hoping for an explanation. Is this the only agreement we have in town where there's, uh, monies being held for a private organization? I don't remember this before. Is it unique? Anyone?
I do not have the answer.
I could say only because I remember voting on this before. I think this is fairly unique where Bequest came into the town specifically for the Wakefield Garden Club. And apparently we just haven't done anything with the interest in the last three years, which is why we're voting on it now. I do remember at some point voting on this before to transfer whatever interest was generated.
It seems like a good cause. It just, it feels so unique that they're going to transfer the $200 of interest.
But the Bequest was made in 1970. So this is just carrying forward and carrying forward. That's fascinating.
This to happen.
Yeah, it's great.
I will find out that information for you, Counselor Fox.
It was unique to me, that's all.
Again, things that don't come up that often.
Apparently probably should come up a little more often.
Maybe, maybe that's the, that's the.
Well, last year we couldn't fit them on the agenda, Madam Chair. We didn't get out of here until 12 o'clock.
So we had a motion. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Great. Thank you. Item G.
Madam Chair, move to accept and expend a gift from the Savings Bank for the Health and Human Services Department in the amount of $250 with thanks.
Second.
Seconded, great. Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you to the Savings Bank. And thank you again. This was the great Wakefield Recovery and Remembrance event that happened in September. So thank you to all those that helped coordinate it and the people that helped sponsor it. Item H.
Move to accept and expend a gift or gifts for $937.99 to the Lucius B. B. Library from various donors with thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? I feel like I need to give a penny. But I'll resist. All in favor, say aye. Great. Thank you. Um, item nine licenses.
Move to approve a 2025 Common Victular and Entertainment License for Candarella's Bake Shop on Water Street?
No, Albion.
They're moving.
Oh, they're moving. On Albion Street.
Who's moving where?
Candarella's is moving from.
Water Street?
They're Vernon, sorry, not Water Street.
From Vernon to Albion, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
They're not going to, they, they're not doing a license, are they?
Well, they haven't applied for one.
It isn't, yeah, it's just the common, I always forget what, what falls under the Common Victular. It's just food, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Sherry, they got all their paperwork in?
Yes, they are all set.
Awesome. Okay, all in favor, say aye, seven zero. Thank you. Um, item 10 warrants.
I signed them. I'm not sure. I didn't have a chance to talk to Captain Devoo on the, on the warrants.
I think they're good to go.
Great. Okay, they were signed.
I move we approve.
I don't even think we have to do that. You did it with your signature. Great. Item 11, 11A, empty.
Madam Chair, move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes for October 15, 2025.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Carney. All in favor?
You were not.
I was not, I don't think.
It was on the phone.
For the 15th? You, I think you were there. I think.
I logged off early, but I was there for the vote.
Yeah, we were all there.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I was there.
We were all there. Yeah.
It was, it was quick and it was on the phone.
Yeah.
Ah, yes.
We do the second one?
Yep. Uh, move to approve the Town Council meeting minutes for October 20, 2025.
Seconded, seconded, great. All, all in favor? Um, six.
I think it was five.
Five, five.
Five, six.
Five.
Five?
You and John both.
Access from the meetings. Am I allowed to vote on the minutes?
No.
No.
Sure.
Okay, moving, um, 12 announcements. Anyone have any announcements?
I do.
Counselor Constance?
I am in my capacity as town, a town counselor, going to host a townwide cookie swap on December 11th at the Civic Center because there is, my very favorite thing about the holiday season is baking cookies. So why not share the joy? So I'm, I'm go, put something in the item about it. And it'll be on my, um, my Facebook page. There'll be more information coming. I've been working with the Board, the Board of Health and the Health Department to make sure that allergy protocols are observed. And it's just, uh, just a community gathering event. Hopefully it'll be fun. We'll see. Could be just me in there with my cookies. We'll see.
Good luck. God bless.
That is great. Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselor Chimes?
Just a couple of things coming up. Uh, one, for anyone who hasn't gotten their flu shot, uh, there will be a flu clinic at the library on Wednesday from 10 to 1. Uh, I believe that coincides with Chief Sullivan's retirement party. So, you know, if you happen to be downtown at the time and you need a flu shot, just walk on down there as well. Couple of things, Thanksgiving week. Uh, the traditional Thanksgiving football game is actually going to be happening on Tuesday, which is not Thanksgiving. But the reason it's happening on Tuesday is because Wakefield Melrose are playing at Fenway, which is pretty cool. So, uh, anyone who's interested in that, uh, you know, make sure to get your tickets and head over there. Kind of a neat experience for, for the teams and the cheerleaders and the band and everyone who's, who will be there. Uh, and then finally, on Thanksgiving morning itself, uh, the Cross Country Boosters are hosting their annual turkey trot and Thanksgiving race around the lake. I believe that starts at eight in the morning at the Commons. So, uh, plenty of time to get a little run in before you put your turkey in the oven.
Any other announcements?
Just to, just a reminder, tomorrow, the Veterans Day event, 11:11 at 11 at the Galvin Middle School. Also, um, just want to tell everyone the Interfaith Thanksgiving service that our clergy put on in town is going to be Tuesday, November 25th at 7:00 p.m. at the Glenn's Church. Which church is that? I should know.
No.
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 The Methodist?
The Methodist.
The Methodist, yes. Sorry.
Sorry.
Go on, pull it on something.
Yes, so, uh, Tuesday, November 25th at 7:00 p.m. It's always a great event. Um, any other announcements? Okay, um, also just want to thank everyone who came to town meeting. Thanks to Town Administrator D. Casey. It was the fastest town meeting any of us can remember. Thank you to WCAT. Uh, thank you for the students, um, who are raising funds for the Wakefield Food Pantry. And at Last Count had raised, um, over $700 to donate to our food pantry. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 13, matters not anticipated for agenda. Anything? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I still moved, Madam Chair.
Great. Um, uh, all in favor of adjourned, say aye, seven zero. Great. Thank you all. Our next regular Town Council meeting will be Monday, December 8th. Uh, see you then. Thank you.